Good evening, everyone. I want to welcome you all to our regular meeting scheduled for March thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three. This is LaSour City Council. At this time, we will call the meeting at your order.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under a law, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Council members, you were given your packet via email or it was dropped off. You can weekend review it. You have an opportunity to reach out with any questions for city administrator. This time, I will entertain any motions to approve tonight's consent agenda. So, Mr. Sullivan, thank you. Councilmember Schlier seconded.
He means just the regular agenda.
Did I say consent? Oh, the regular, well, the entire agenda. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. So let's rephrase that. The the site's agenda. So, seconded by Councilmember Schlier. Any other discussion, comments, concerns? If not, all those in favor? If anybody opposed, the ayes have. Moving on to the consent agenda. At this time, we will have our city administrator review those with us. All items on consent agenda are considered routine and been made available to city council at least two days in advance of the meeting. These items will be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the council member, citizen, so requests which event will be removed from the agenda and considered in normal sequence. This is where we want to review those with us.
I'm going to thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. On tonight's consent agenda, we have six different items. The first is approval of city council minutes from its regular city council meeting on February twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three. Item B, approved dispersments through today, March thirteenth, included in those dispersments is five items over twenty-five thousand dollars. First, MMPA care about energy from February twenty-two purchase power, five hundred and sixty-four thousand, six hundred and sixty-nine dollars and seventeen cents. Second, anger pure, a credit for the twenty-two bio solids, fifty-six thousand, seventy-seven dollars and eighty-nine cents. Third, the Minnesota Department of Revenue for February twenty-twenty-three city sales tax of forty-two thousand, seven hundred and one dollars. Fourth, to Neo Water Treatment LLC for FX three hundred wastewater treatment material, thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred and sixty-six dollars and sixty-eight cents. And finally, to Logis, it's our annual building current software license, seventy-two thousand, nine hundred and fifty-five dollars. Item C, approval of sort farmers market request. We have some a couple of members here representing the sort farmers market. I will call them on that. Okay, Mr. Mayor, during my city administrator update, please do. Item D, application number eighteen for the positive elevated water tower. Item E, approval of updated airport lease agreement documents and item F, one personnel action.
Thank you. Do any council members have any questions regarding tonight's consent agenda? I'll refer to myself for Mr. Robyn. If not, we entertain a motion to accept tonight's consent agenda. Thank you, Councilmember Swamber. Councilmember Swammer, agree. Seconded the motion. Any other discussion, comments, concerns? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Everybody opposed? The ayes have. Moving on to public comment. Before I read this, we'll see if we have anybody that's gonna make any comments tonight. One. Public comment provides an opportunity for the public to address the council on items that are not on tonight's agenda. Comment can be limited to five minutes per person. Persons wishing to make comments will sign up in advance for the meeting on the sheet provided and then find themselves with the provided names and address. Looks like we have the police scouts here today. What is your name, sir?
My name is Ben Bonn Hetchen. I'm a member of troop ninety-three-two-eight, which is LaSour's police scout troop. And we'd like to thank the city council for giving us the LaSour Community Center for our annual lock-in this year. It was a great event. It went well, and we'd like to thank you guys. The trip would also like to thank city staff member Bob Liebhard. Yeah, Liebhard, for staying up all night and ensuring that we had a safe environment. We have a card for you guys.
Thank you. Ben, when night was this lock-in? Remember what it was?
Apparently March.
And how many scouts were there?
Uh, we had seventy scouts. Oh, seventy attendees. I believe it was fifty-six scouts.
And real quick, I don't want to pick up too much of this time. What events did you have going on?
Uh, we had the ice rain all night. We had basketball in the gym. We had one of the racquetball courts and the mayor crew along with the loss.
Well, Ben, thank you for coming tonight. We appreciate hearing from you. And what rank are you? You're a first.
I am a life scout.
You're a life scout.
Working on a new project right now.
We would like you and we would like to rescue you too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I come up there and bring me?
Please do. I believe we have nobody else here to address the council tonight. So with that, we'll move on to the city administrators update.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I've got a few items tonight before I invite some of our community members up to share. Since our last meeting, at the last meeting, I mentioned that I've been sending the manufacturers lunch in on the Gabrielle, who's our friends at the Chamber. I thought it was a very successful event. It was really neat to meet some members of our industrial base on the Gabrielle. Gabrielle was a very gracious host. We've got an update on some of the things that the Chamber's up to and then EDA, EDA Community Development Staff Member Zach Bonney and I had a chance to share a little bit about the city and the EDA and the city's goals in in working with our local employers. So, great event and they're, I know they're looking, I assume they're still looking for volunteer from the industrial community here in town to host the next event. But it was, it was, it was great. A lot of fun. So thanks to the Chamber for hosting that. Our facilities master planning is still moving forward. We have a meeting on Thursday with our consulting team to look at some, some concepts and concepts are more than just, we kind of outline what our communities' needs are, what our communities wants, our, we've established from the community centers current assets allow for what kind of space we have to utilize. And from here, it's kind of drawing on the map, so to speak, around the community center to see what we might be able to, to build into there and to enhance it. Looking at operating costs for different enhancements, moving things around to really establish what, what some final cost might look like for the community center. New elementary school plan review. So, as I mentioned the last meeting, we had recently received the plans from the school district and school districts architect for the new elementary school on the corner of Kingsway and Ferry. And we've had a couple of meetings now internally and a meeting last week with the school district and their engineers and architects to go through the plans, discuss how the plans are in city code. There'll be a plan unit development application coming to the planning commission in the near future here that outlines exactly what the district plans to do. And then following the planning commission will come here to city council for review, consideration and approval. So, standing, standing meeting now every week to continue to look through the plans and just for a little context, when we, when I mention, when I say plans, we're looking less at the the building itself. So, the state of Minnesota has jurisdiction over building code for schools. So, our building official, Justin Nielsen, does, will not do the building inspections on the building itself. What we look at is more from a utility standpoint, electrical access. Do we have easements that we need, water and sewer, and how those are coming into the building, moving around the building? Stormwater drainage, things like that, ingress and egress, fire protection. All those elements kind of around the building where the city has jurisdiction and where our zoning code in particular has jurisdiction. So, that's going well. It's pretty hot and heavy now, but very exciting. City clerk that was just approved. Now, we're very excited to welcome Lindsay Day. Lindsay comes to us. She's been serving as deputy city clerk in Jordan for the past few years and prior to that, she was city clerk over in Henderson. So, she knows our community very well. Thrilled to have her board. We're working on a start date for right this morning. Fire commission met a little over a week ago and very successful, I thought. Councilmember Sullivan may want to share a little bit more later. Commission meets three times a year and this, this meeting was the big one where we shared what the fire assessments are with the townships. But I didn't start to graph and she managed to do a great job of preparing all the numbers and explaining how we budget and what our future plans are for capital needs and the fire department. And we have a really good relationship with our, our friends in the townships. Last week was the due date for congressional directed, congressional directed spending, which is kind of the euphemism for earmark spending, you know, pork barrel spending. Congress used to have, you know, the projects in their districts and you can apply for funds and get all kinds of money. That's how we got the money for the police radios last year. So, they bumped up the application deadline this year. So, we did submit a couple of projects for that, hoping that we can get some traction. This year included and add our radios for the fire department. So, the total quote for police department radios is a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. The fire department's total quota is around three hundred thousand dollars. So, we're hopeful that we can get some money there. Wednesday, and I don't want to steal Councilmember Schlier's thunder here, but on Wednesday morning, it is Wednesday morning, isn't it? Yes, it is Wednesday morning. We have a climate smart municipalities meeting and they've asked us to speak a little bit about hometown bioenergy, which Councilmember Schlier volunteered before, which would be a great opportunity. I tried to come on up on here, but I get to do the honors. And that's run by the University of Minnesota. Such an interesting meeting. Tomorrow morning, the mayor will be hosting woman Angie Craig here at city hall. She's, we invited her down here a couple of months ago after she was sworn in. This is her first term in which LaSour County is included in congressional district two. So, she is familiarizing herself with LaSour County and we figured what better place to start than the namesake of the county. So, we're looking forward to her visit tomorrow. She wants to talk a little bit about the congressional directed spending that you received last year. She, Tiki, will be there as well. And finally, summer in the valley. So, the farmers market request, that's on the consent agenda. We're really excited for the farmers market that's coming back this year. The layout will be similar in a moment here. I'll ask a couple of representatives to come up and speak about that. Now, summer in the valley, summer in the valley, if you recall from last year, was one of the chamber's highlighted events from the summers, the third Thursday of every month, June, July and August, and we held downtown. I had a meeting a couple of weeks ago with Adam Copley and Chris Barrett, representing the Chamber. And we talked about some of the things that'll be, that weren't well last year, things that they'd like to enhance this year and what the city's role might be in, in promoting that, really bringing people into the downtown to stay for some fun activities. Last year, I think there were some successes. This year's opportunity to grow on that. So, I'll be compiling a list, much like we do for other requests for in-kind support that the city might provide to the events, shutting down Main Street, providing stage, there'll be music, and they'd like to orient the music a little bit differently this year to open up the space a little bit, to make it more of a feature event. So, within the next couple of meetings, I expect I'll bring something for the city council requesting some in-kind support for that event, which is, again, it's a great community-wide event that the city, in my view, has a, has a role to support and encourage. And we're also with our partners in the Chamber and our commercial district downtown to keep people downtown on a nice summer evening. So, with that, I don't know who wants to go first, but we have Sarah Johnson Malkow here, Adam Copley, Chris Barrett, Sarah and Adam are gonna talk farmers market first and then Adam and Chris can talk about something about, whoever wants to start. Sorry, maybe I'll wait for it.
I guess first, thank you for your time tonight. Sarah and I are here to represent the farmers market, which we, it has been around for a couple of decades. This iteration, we reorganized last year. We asked y'all and thank you for approving the move to Second Street in front of the patent place building and in between that place and the city parking lot. We had up to thirteen vendors. In a single occurrence, we had twenty-one that were registered and did sell throughout the year. Maybe not quite twenty-one. We had twenty-one registered, but and we've got a lot, a lot planned for this year. Do you want to talk at all or should I keep on?
Uh, well, well, planning for this year, we assembled a program of speakers and specialty information presenters, who we have a different presenter every Saturday at the market and some, some Saturdays we have two. So, that's nice. It's a mix of experts on agricultural techniques or crafting techniques and then also service organizations and some new things. So.
Yeah, this is, it's called At The Market and it's, it's our initiative to really draw people, new traffic to the market, educate our community and give our vendors and some of the market-related type of experts in the area apply from to really place themselves as the expert to these people and to the community and develop a relationship with them. So, we feel like it's gonna be a really exciting change in addition. One other thing we've done is we partnered with Nine Nature Center as a fiscal agent so we can accept grand money. They'll also help us with marketing and, and some other smaller needs that we have. But we feel like this is gonna help us grow quite a bit and continue to provide value.
Plus, they, you know, they want to work, we, we want to work with them. They want to work with us to partner on collaborating some events. So, we don't know what that looks like yet, but we'll, we'll let you know.
Yeah. Do you all have any questions?
Thank you. Any council members have any questions? I wish you all well with the season this year. It seems like I'm always away with all this snow out here, but we're looking forward to it. So, thank you for.
Thank you. Thanks.
So, um, I am here on behalf of the Chamber and the Chamber is really, really working hard on doing all that we can to promote business, our businesses in LaSour. And so, we're, we're, we're trying to bring back the retail and business XO that you see the banner up, coming up on April first. But Summer in the Valley has also been part of that. We're inviting all of our Chamber members to come down and take part in the event. Like Mr. Roby said, it is going to be the third Thursday of June, July and August. We're gonna have a featured musician or musicians that evening. And we're hoping to have some family fun activities and we're hoping Chamber businesses will come out and maybe just have a booth of some sort that will maybe have a giveaway or just, just promoting themselves and offer, have, giving the opportunity to network with each other and just let everyone mingle and have a good time and have some food and beverages and just celebrate what we all have in LaSour. So, that's kind of what our goal is for the Chamber. If at any time you hear of any suggestions, please forward them our way. We're willing to listen and we're willing to work hard to, to do what our businesses are yearning to, to have a Chamber do. So.
Can you just talk about some vision for this year specifically? Yeah, specifically this year. Well, last year, last year it was very small. We had three artists on three different dates, similar format. We had two, two or three food trucks and probably fifty or a hundred people come out to listen to music each, each day. This year, we plan to, as Joe Roby stated, turn the stage, get a little bit bigger stage and put it right down the middle of the street, we're hoping to. And then we will, we will be adding more entertainment for kids and potentially like a dump tank and some other things like that. We also plan to, Chris and I are currently working to build a sponsorship model so that we can, we can sustain the event, really and utilize some of the partnerships that we have with manufacturers in town that really drive our economy and some other folks that want to become involved. So, we're hoping to build it into a larger event that brings in large numbers of people over, over the next few years, just like communities like New Prague and, you know, St. Peter, Nikado, Chocopee. They all have, yeah, hundreds. Yeah, even Tuesday I had seen. Yeah.
No questions?
I have none. Any council member have any questions? Chris, I want to thank you for your work with the Chamber and I wish you all success in the role this summer with this event and farmers market also. I appreciate the community engagements. Thank you. With that said, we will move on to the regular agenda for me. The Robyn, we will be talking about the MMPA power sales agreement extension. Mr. Robyn, you want to cover that?
I would. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I have something on tonight's agenda. Resolution R twenty-two-three dash zero one zero. Specifically, the MMPA power sales agreement extension. So, I'm gonna give a little background, a little history here. We do have with us tonight Neil Progman, who has served as the city's representative to MMPA for several years now. And after I walk through some things, I would invite Mr. Progman up to the podium to give his thoughts and add additional insight. So, first, the history. The city's purchased a hundred percent of its electricity from MMPA, Minnesota Municipal Power Agency since nineteen ninety-six. What this has done is the city benefits from stability rates that MMPA has offered partnerships and future energy production. We'll talk a little bit about that in a couple of minutes. Just moving forward, thinking that MMPA and its partner communities have a common preparation for a changing energy market. We've seen that really clearly in the last couple of years and I think the partnership that we've maintained with MMPA has benefited the city and the overall community, all the city's customers, especially in the last couple of years. And giving us a seat at the table, as I mentioned, Mr. Progman sits as the city's, city LaSour's representative to MMPA, Public Services Director Rich Kuchera sits as the MMPA alternate for the city. And something that's unique about MMPA is that we truly do have a seat at the table. Each of the member communities is a representative to sit on the MMPA board. One, one seat, one vote at the table. And then, and that's unique, you know, certainly cooperatives have boards, but frequently those are elected members of boards with MMPA. We are granted one seat on the board. Our current agreement with MMPA expires October thirty-first, twenty forty. And what MMPA board has been doing over the last couple of months here is working with its member communities, seeking extensions for each community through twenty-sixty. One of the key reasons for this, this was shared by David Niles, who was here representing the energy and MMPA last November here in front of city council, was it grants an MPA flexibility to issue thirty-year debt. And right now, with a lot of its member, previously its member contracts going through twenty forty or twenty fifty, it simply didn't, didn't allow MMPA the strength in, in buying more debt. The thirty-year debt insurance is from grants. And for MMPA, what allows us additional investment in some of the efforts that is undertaken over the last ten, fifteen years that we'd like to carry forward and are particularly, in my mind, notable considering legislation that's recently come down through the state of Minnesota around looking to a carbon-free environment. So, in front of city council tonight is a resolution to adopt an amendment to the original contract with MMPA to extend the date through twenty-sixty. And here's just a quick timeline. Back in nineteen ninety-two, so about thirty years ago, city council entered into the initial agreement. So, the initial agreement was signed in nineteen ninety-two by city council. It was purchased through MMPA starting in nineteen ninety-six and the city was served as one of eight charter members of MMPA at the time. The term for that nineteen ninety-two deal was extension to sunset in twenty twelve. As I mentioned, nineteen ninety-six, we began purchasing our electricity through MMPA. Then in twenty twenty, city council extended the agreement through twenty twenty-two. And then in two thousand four, the city council extended the agreement through the current term, twenty forty. And each of these extensions has followed the same, the same path, using the same language as the proposed language in tonight's resolution, where the core of the original contract remains intact. The section of the contract that changes or has changed with each of these extensions is simply an amendment to the term of the contract itself. So, you go back in the archives and in the year two thousand, the city council considered an extension of the original contract. They left the body of the contract itself intact. Simply changed section seven, which changed the termination date of the contract and saying it was true two thousand four. The currently twelve member communities of MMPA, again, we were one of the original eight. We're right down there in Southern. Looking back, this is, this is data that was provided from MMPA and it was the same information that was shared by Mr. Niles back in November. So, this isn't anything new for the public to see. Just a little bit different context tonight because councils, they asked tonight to consider the extension. One of the key benchmarks that we as staff use is how do our electrical rates compare to Excel energies? So, you know, we have some other opportunities around us for buying wholesale power, Excel Energy, Minnesota Electric Co-op, Banco to ourselves. And it's only one of the biggest power players in the state. We look back to nineteen ninety-eight. There was a stretch in the very early two thousands where Excel's rates were a bit lower than MMPAs, but since two thousand nine, consistently MMPAs rates have been lower. What that means ultimately is that for our end users, the consumers of electricity within our electric service territory, the rates that we are able to procure electricity at have been lower and we can pass on those savings to the end users. Looking at MMPA's energy portfolio, this is really interesting. I think in particular, it's hard to see up here. I apologize if the conversation comes with something with to, to see the change, particularly in renewables from two thousand six to twenty twenty-three, whereas right now over forty percent of MMPA's energy portfolio comes from renewables. And again, that's when we look at the last six weeks worth of legislation and dialogue that's happened in city hall. That means a lot and that, that element of coal and is shrinking, really non-existent now. Really non-existent now. So MMPA has put a lot of investment and time into. Procuring energy through renewable resources. And also importantly, for us as the, as a member and a wholesale purchaser. Is MMPA generating a lot of this electricity themselves and not simply relying on the market. And instill it in the market to buy it and then rent the mercy of whatever the market is. They control a lot of the means of production, as my economy one-one professor has said. Which is our benefit. Financially, MMPA has been in a good, healthy position. Sales have been increasing with the, the strength of their sales portfolio is strong throughout their member communities. One thing that they've. Worked on in the last couple of years has been decreasing their debt load. First, probably ready to prepare for future investments. But. Using cash to pay off debt as they're able to. And getting to the future, this is where I'll invite Mr. Kropman forward. For the future. As I'm going to the future person and completely unstable energy market. Having a large-scale solar and if we see. Co-ops and electrical suppliers doing this wherever they possibly can. Having large-scale solar, one thing that MMPA would like to do is look at smaller-scale solar near member communities. And, and also continue to operate some of their. Their consistent power generation facilities. So Chocopee Energy Park and Frickham Energy Park. And we're super fueling more of this with renewable natural gas. And RNG, renewable natural gas, is also not, it's not the first time, as you mentioned, at a City Council meeting. MMPA came to City Council last June or July. To share the plans they had for hometown bioenergy, where they were transitioning hometown bio from being electricity generating facility to being a renewable natural gas generating facility. Which then they could. Utilize themselves or send directly into the pipeline to be sold. As a, it's a replacement for natural gases on. That's a lot of information, so I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Kropman and I know you can, you can add anything you'd like. And. Is there anything that I missed?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I've had the opportunity to be on the MMPA board for about six years. Unfortunately, most of what we do is confidential, because it's a business practice in a way, but I can share a lot with you. Let me kind of do it in two ways. I'm going to talk about why we want to commit to twenty sixty. In other words, about the agency itself. Technically, it was the Minnesota Municipal Power Agency, which is a political subdivision of the state. So you wouldn't call it a corporation, we call everyone, but technically it's the agency, and I'm going to call it that. And finally, I'll talk about why are we being given this opportunity to extend the contract or the power sales agreement, PSA, to twenty sixty. First of all, the agency has certainly demonstrated strong financial management and performance. This is evidence, by the way, in some things that were not shown to you earlier. By just simply looking at the financial records, which we do have access to as a member. And also by the recognition of bonding agencies such as Fitch and Moody's, both of which have given us very good, good ratings. The agency, of course, has built and continues to build a diverse power production or power source rather than portfolio. And we are absolutely well-positioned as, as an agency to provide power and to meet the state requirements for renewable and carbon-free. A little bit complicated, but there are two different standards, renewable, carbon-free, but we're on track to be able to meet those. As a member of the agency, we have voice and vote on the board of directors, as Joe pointed out. By certain other arrangements, we would not directly have voice. We might have somebody that's elected from the area, but might serve five or six communities. Whereas we have a direct voice on this board, not only voice, but of course, vote. The agency, of course, is nonprofit and we are a member. This positions us in the future years to benefit from the advantageous rates and reliable power source. Next thing is, of the twelve that you saw listed. Craig, you know if Olivia has acted yet? Not, okay. There are twelve communities, two of us have not yet voted on this, Olivia and LaSour. The other ten have already voted affirmatively to extend their contracts to twenty sixty. What does that mean? Well, to me, it says they've demonstrated their confidence in the agency. And of course, we are now this evening about to decide if we will so extend. So why are we given this opportunity? Why give us an opportunity so I look at it to extend? Well, it's obviously to facilitate thirty-year projects, financing opportunities, which the agency will then be able to do to benefit us for the years to come. I'm adding one other thing that hasn't been said up here particularly. In my personal opinion, this will also help the agency attract other member cities and towns. Which will help keep our management and energy production and procurement costs lower, therefore lowering the amount we pay for energy. So I see it as a win for our situation, for our situation and for our community. And so I would urge you to approve the resolution extending our contract to twenty sixty. I'll stand for any questions, if anybody has any, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Kropman. Appreciate it. I'll let anybody else have any questions, Chris.
I just have one question. Would MMPA actively go after some other communities that you're aware of? Are they sharing that?
I don't think I can say that we, there's some that are being talked to. We recently acquired Elk River, which was a big piece of the portfolio. And by getting Elk River, it gives us an extension to that area and we're now working on a renewable energy project there with waste management, where they have a large. What do you call it? Waste management facility. So I'm not aware of any particular ones, but I'm sure we will have some. Okay. Keep in mind, we're, we're looking far out here, but we want to position the agency and ourselves in the best way possible.
Mr. Kropman, you know, you, you talked about MMPA being a producer of renewable energy. I just want to take, for example, like Excel Energy, Minnesota Valley Electric. Do you have any idea what their renewable energy percentage is at?
I actually do not, but I can tell you that Excel has a large percentage, which is nuclear. Which counts not as renewable, but as carbon-free. When you hear the word it's carbon-free, that's a buzzword for that. Mr. Dent, Craig is with us this evening. Do you, do you know the answer to that?
I don't know that exactly.
No, I don't know either. I'm sorry, it's not, I'm sorry. I can tell you this, that we recently acquired a contract, long-term contract. So that this year will be up to forty-three percent renewable already. That's in twenty twenty-three. That came online as of December. Before that, we were roughly in the mid twenties, maybe a little more at times. So we are definitely positioned to go forward with that. We're looking a lot now, I think I can say this without disclosing anything, we're looking, as Joe mentioned, about solar, both large and small. In, in different areas of different communities. Let me put out, the advantage to renewables is that if you have wind or you have solar, you have a fixed cost when you start. You certainly have some, some maintenance costs, but you're not subject to the market. You're not subject to gas and oil prices, particularly gas prices. Which, as you know, in the last couple of years, if you pay any, if you need to heat your house with gas, you know what's happened. That goes up and down. In fact, it went way a while back and now it's coming down slowly, but even now, it's not near what it was in the beginning of, I think, twenty twenty-two. So we're, I think we're going to be positioned well with that, with MMPA. Which means, by the way, that we get reasonable prices and reliable power. I think it's way out in the future, our batteries and how it's going to be. But let's face it, solar, you only get solar at certain times of the day, a little less certain times of the year. But that's also being looked at.
Anybody else? Just real quick. You know, I read newspapers and Excel and all the other ones, they're covered by, I think, what the Minnesota Utilities Commission or something. They want to raise rates and, you know, they got to go through all this rigmarole and they end up getting about half what they asked for. Is MMPA, are they under that umbrella?
Well, we're, we're subject to regulations and so forth, fire pollution control and. But, but what you're talking about, no, we don't have to take our rates to them. That's a separate category and you're right, they, they, they looked at a big increase and they usually do that and then they get cut back down. And we are, by the way, greatest here. We're, we are consistently ten percent. You would like it to be a little more below them. But we, we've got a benchmark that we use to make sure we're at least ten percent below them or ten, no more than ten percent. Which is a very competitive thing, by the way. Okay, so. We're not subject to their, their rate approval, is the answer. Talked a lot to say no. Thanks, Mike. Anything else?
Thank you, Mr. Kropman.
You're welcome. Real quick, Mr. Grant, I invited you down here and I'm not going to let you leave without introducing yourself. Now, I'll answer you a quick question or two, if you don't mind. Introduce yourself first.
Yeah, I'm Greg Grant, General Manager for Chocopee Public Utilities, which is the largest member of MMPA. I also sit on the board with Newell. We did sign this agreement also several months ago. Really, the forward thinking is what, what surprised me and what we need to think about even before the mandates of the renewables came out. You know, we had some of these contracts to get close to fifty percent. We're really striving and I think, you know, we need to look now at, you know, sixty percent by twenty thirty is what we have to be for carbon-free. Ninety percent by twenty thirty-five and a hundred percent by twenty, twenty forty. So that's the mandate. They did give an exemption for municipal utilities, our agencies. Again, that first step doesn't have to be a hundred percent or ninety percent. So, you know, there's a step in there that we get a little bit longer time, so we're poised for, for the future. And I, I agree that the Excel Energy of the world has to go through that, so that's the one thing that's nice about having municipal utility. Is you guys get to decide. You get to decide what rates are. Yes, the wholesale power contracts are, are under a different umbrella and you have to pay that because you're a member, you're a voting member. But all other rates are decided at this level and then same, same with Chocopee with, with the commission, we decide the rates at that. So that's really, really nice thing about it and yes, the renewables is a big thing. We got Oakland Wind Farm, which is forty-four megawatts. They talk about wind and it's something that the agency owns, so sometimes prices go negative at night. It's kind of weird to, to think about this on the MISO footprint. And if you're under a contract, you have to take that, you have to actually pay extra for your, to get into the market. We can shut that one off. So that's one of the things that's unique for MMPA is able to do is to shut some of those wind turbines off. So sometimes you see them, they're not going, you're like, it's windy out. Why isn't it? Well, if there's too much energy in the market, the MISO market will be negative. So then sometimes people shut them off. So it's just, it's just a different animal. And that's why it's nice to be on a board, that you don't have to try to think of those things on a regular basis, twenty-four-seven operations and what we're doing. So that's just one of them. Fairboil and Park, obviously, is a three hundred megawatts. That's a combined cycle that the agency has. Black Oak is a hundred megawatt renewable energy under contract for wind. Then Little, BioLaverne is another mega, a hundred megawatts, six megawatts solar, seven megawatt Buffalo Solar. So I'm sorry, combined secondly, Suer is a biogas, six megawatt. Seven megawatt is Buffalo Solar, looking to do more. So the agency has done solar, probably more coming up. And then Chaska has a simple cycle that doesn't get run that often, but it's there under emergency situations. So this, you know, I, I enjoy being on the board with lots of lively discussions and as, as Bill said. Sometimes when I look at cash flows and where we're at, I push for a little bit lower rates yet to go to these customers and, and these cities. But also when you look at all these big projects we have to do, we're going to be poised to do some in, some in cash and some in financing. And that's really a good spot to be, that you're not financing the whole thing. So that's just kind of what I said. You know, I know Mr. Kirby and he just, we were talking about this and I said, sure, I'll just stop by and if you have any questions for me. And we're excited to get moving on and on to the next steps.
Real quick, Mr. Grant, if you were, if you ordered, look to a different utility for, for municipal power, what, what administrative infrastructure challenges would you see?
You know, so I mean, obviously you can have contracts with other people like Excel Energy, but you can see you're going to have higher rates on Excel Energy. You know, as far as on the wholesale side of things, there is other agencies. There's Simba, the Southern Minnesota Municipal Power Agency. And they're a group of about fourteen towns, I believe, and Rochester is their largest, but Rochester is, is going to go on their own. I think they're the only other municipal utility to go on their own, just because they're so big. They're about like a three hundred megawatt. Utility, Chakopee's a little like a hundred and twelve, I think you guys are about like seventeen megawatts. So you can just understand the scale it takes to really do this. There's CMMPA, it's also another power agency, Central Minnesota Power Agency. Missouri River is the third one that some smaller communities kind of get together. But most, all these other ones, their board directors are different than what MMPA is. Like Newell said, everybody gets a vote. The only time it's weight voting is when we're selling bonds. Otherwise, it's one vote on every action we do. So one for one, one town, we get twelve votes every time. So what votes as much as your vote? It sure is. The only time it isn't, isn't, is when the bombing happens. So, so that's the key difference between most agencies like Simba, they will, they have a board of directors, it's about six or seven. And that's what they, they get to choose in every of elections. And so a big thing that I looked at when I, when I thought about it and I worked really sore for twenty years and now I've been in Chocopee for seven years. You know, what really made a big difference to me is when Elk River came on and they had the choice of anybody. They were about a sixty-five, seventy megawatt utility and they had a choice of anybody, anywhere to go. They were buying from Canexus Energy through Great River Energy. And another co-op base and they, they wanted a voice because they didn't have that voice. So that's when they chose MMPA, they interviewed all of them, Simba, CMMPA, MMPA, Zer. And they chose this one because they knew that they had a voice and we were forward thinking lots of renewables and, you know, it's coming now really fast.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Kropman, I appreciate your presentation, your answering the questions tonight. Mr. Grant, we appreciate your time also. With that said, I'd like to entertain motion with our resolution R twenty twenty-three dash zero one zero. Approving amendment to the city's power sales agreement with MMPA extending the agreement to December thirty-one of twenty sixty. So. Motion can be made by Councilmember Huntington, is consecrated by Councilmember Sullivan. Any other? Questions, comments, concerns? If not, if you want all those in favor. Anybody opposed? The ice has. Moving on to reports and items of appreciation, council members, this is your opportunity to share anything that's going on in the community or anything that's happening in your commissions. Start as always with Councilmember Huntington.
Thank you. I have two things. First of all, Airport Commission meeting for the first time twenty twenty-three. And in our consent agenda is what we discussed, the airport lease forms. That's that commission, same one as our pack. Got a couple of items for our package to share with the community. Is the arena, this, the weather season is ending. Actually, this Thursday will be the last day and the ice will be coming out. And the association will help the annual Mike Jamboree, the Jamboree. Which brought in two hundred and sixty players from ten associations. That was a very busy day, community center. The golf simulator. Staff is now installing a ramp with turf, artificial turf for the room. And the staff is now going to be building tables and more seating, as well as a mini fridge in the room. And just to know how many hours were booked in February, we had eighty-one point seven five hours booked in February. We were down one point five hours from last week. So it's, it's been used quite considerably. And that's all I have. Thank you. Moving on to Councilmember Schrader, please.
Last week, I attended module one of disaster training for officials in the East Center. Planning Commission conducted discussion on the future of the city forum. They chose a date of October fourteenth. From ten o'clock in the morning till noon, that's going to be at the high school unless we are otherwise. They also did an initial revision of the questionnaire. When they were done with that, they conducted a training work session on plant unit developments in preparation for the upcoming school project and public hearing. Administrator Roby had mentioned that on Wednesday morning, we've got a climate smart monthly meeting with Dr. Sabina Engel. She's the Director of International Partners. monthly meeting with Dr. Sabina Engel. She's the Director of International Partnerships Institute of Environment at the University of Minnesota, and she is glad to have Joe speak at that meeting. We saw our county officials meeting for March is going to be held in Montgomery on Wednesday, the 22nd, and Aaron Stubbs from Environmental Services, the planning and zoning administrators, going to be featured speakers.
Thank you, Councilmember Sullivan.
I think Joe touched pretty well on the third commission. I don't think there was anything drastic there. I did my assessments, and I have a transition tomorrow, so I didn't know that. Nothing apart.
Thank you. Councilmember Swamper.
Just a thank you to Bob and Allison and their seasoned employees at the Community Center for providing just an excellent sheet of ice for us to play hockey on this past season. We did a great job.
Councilmember Julie.
Only that I attended with him and Scott, the same disaster recovery responsibility module. Pretty informative, other than that.
Thank you. Councilmember Wynn.
I want to reiterate what Ben had said about the Boy Scout lock-in and commenting on Mr. Lee Hard and his participation. I actually was up there after the boys were in there with America, but I was impressed it wasn't all sweaty and humid out, and he was busy marking the fours. And I had mentioned that he was there all night, and I thought he looked pretty good for being up all night, so commend him on his job, on his accountability for making sure it was a good time for everybody. The incident command training that we had is ongoing, and at least a couple, three more modules or so. Be interesting to see if they get that all done. It was a little dry, but informative, more than I'm not accustomed to. I'm more accustomed to being at the command table versus the policy table. No difference for me.
Thank you. On to the mayor's report. I got a quick announcement. The Sur Henry's Committee is sponsoring a meet and greet for all new citizens and community members. That's this Saturday at the library, 10 o'clock. I think we were there with Mr. Schleger last time. We had one, I think, last winter. So if you're available, love to see you there. And then also, the Sur Community Foundation is having a hit together on March 23rd, 6 o'clock social with Sur Gerbs. They want to talk about some fundraising ideas and community needs. If you're interested in that event, there's a barcode over here to scan if you'd like to make your reservation. So with that, I have nothing else, and I will entertain a motion to dismiss this meeting. So move. Thank you, Councilmember Huntington. All those in favor?